Good afternoon and welcome to our unusual time of 1:00 today for our workshop. If you would all rise for a moment of silence and the pledge, thank you.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for being here today. We do have a 2:00 time certain, so at about 10 minutes till 2:00, we will take a 10-minute break to let the presenter set up for that presentation. Dr. Moxley, oh, excuse me, public input.
Keep forgetting that. We have one card, Mr. Tibbetts.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent Moxley. Just a couple of comments about tonight's meeting. One, what a great job your staff did with the insurance policy with a savings of $300 and some $1,000. Two other things of interest, the $1.3 million to train principals and teachers. It's wonderful that we got that money, but one would presume that when we hire people, they already know what they're supposed to do and have to spend a lot of money to train them seems redundant. And second concern is what do we do when the money runs out? The last item I want to address is the Tindale Study. Looking at it is a wonderful display of modern art, which would be entitled "Black on White." And the study in and of itself is a canvas that they've painted white. And boy, do you guys need to do a lot of work inserting the black to help the council give the impact fees that we need. As one reads that study, it says in the year 2000, we're still going to have capacity in our schools. One could then presume, obviously, we don't need impact fees, we've got room enough, you and I know better, but the study does not specify what's going to be the impact on the hills of Mineola. 1,208 students will come from those students according to the formula in the study. That leaves us 140 other students that are going to come from somewhere in the next five years, not counting development happening right outside of Howie and the Hills, across from Royal Harbor, and all the other places that building is going on. The key question that you have to explain to the people who aren't here is where do you need it? What's it for? Talk to them about schools that are 101-years-old that you're using, 91-years-old, 92-years-old, 96-years-old, 99-years-old. If that isn't a mandate to collect that money, nothing is. In the end, though, I would advise you that according to the study, right now, the 75% that they are going to collect puts its third in the state. I don't think we can really ask for a whole lot more except to get that that we need desperately. Thank you for your time.
And Mr. Tibbetts, just so you know, they were told to be here at 2:00, so they will be here. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Moxley.
Yes, good afternoon, members of the board and to everyone in the audience. Thank you so much for being here today. I see a lot of faces representing our schools, and I know that they are here for a very important topic, and that's our very first item on the agenda. And board members, today we have three presentations by our staff, and then, of course, the impact fee study where we will have our consultant come in. That is where the hard stop comes at 2:00, so we will make sure that we govern ourselves accordingly with the time. The very first item is our Next Gen Systems Initiative, and this is an update. And Kathy Halbig is our district leader for this position, and in fact, she's our newly-named coordinator of personalized learning. Next Gen Systems is the grant initiative that has come from the Gates Foundation. However, in Lake County, we had already established our theory of action, which included personalized learning for teachers and leaders and personalized learning for students. And those are two instructional priorities under our strategic finance plan, and that theory of action was designed as part of our Race to the Top initiative, actually, four, five years ago, as we were moving forward. So in Lake County, we already have those two instructional priorities. So by receiving the Next Gen Systems grant dollars, we have been able to accelerate our work. Now, the folks that you see sitting in the audience represent five schools. These are five schools that, over the past year, received a Phase II grant, where they received some dollars to do some planning and some piloting. And each one of the schools put together their plan and have been able to be very creative in their work, being able to test the waters, and actually do some real innovative things. And we gave a lot of flexibility to the schools so that they could, within the parameters of the requirements of the work, they were able to look at where their school was, determine their needs, and the areas of which they were going to design their work. So we have five different plans, but five very solid plans that are important aspects and components to this work, so that collectively, we have a lot of expertise working on the total component of personalized learning for students. So you can see that we have Wendy Hill Middle School out in force here, we have Umatilla High School out in force, we have South Lake High School out in force, we have Sawgrass Bay out in force, and Lost Lake Elementary School out of force, out in force. And I see the principals and assistant principals, but the other folks that are here, you know, they are so committed to this work, and they have been so dedicated to being very progressive and innovative, they are here on their summertime. And I want to recognize and highlight, to thank them, not only for their hard work all year long and their dedication and commitment, but they're here now in support of this work on their summer vacation. So I think that's very, very admirable and commendable, and I want to thank you for that. So at this time, I'd like to invite Kathy Halbig forward. She is going to give our update on the work and where we are, and Liz Hobart is coming. And Liz, actually, as you know, is over all of our work with our special projects and our instructional priorities. And so while this is a, has a grant initiative part of it that Kathy's been overseeing in this component, it falls within our strategic finance plan and all our special initiatives. So, you know, this is one of the last board meetings that Liz Hobart's going to be with us, so I'm thrilled to see her at the table here. And so ladies, I'll let you go ahead and walk us through the presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. I'd like to echo Dr. Moxley's recognition of these schools.
It has to be real tight, real close.
I'd like to echo Dr. Moxley's recognition of these schools. They have done amazing work, and it's been a lot of work in a very short time period. So congratulations.
All right, so we're just going to do an update of the Next Gen work so that you'll be able to see where we are and where we've been. So the items on our list today are really just to talk about the launch, pilot, and planned schools, to talk about the Next Gen Systems Initiative or the NGSI support for the work, and the Engage LCS support for the work, give you an overview of what's going to happen in the 2015-16 school year, and then go through the scale-up plan so that you can see what we've got in mind as we move forward with personalized learning. So first of all, you'll see in front of you the goals for personalized learning. We established these about almost two years ago, and this is sort of the pathway that all schools will progress upon. So the goals are to encourage student-directed learning. We really see that as the linchpin, because as students take ownership of their learning, then all of these other things can fall into place. Those include a learner profile and an individual path to mastery, competency-based progression, flexible learning environments, and accountability and continuous improvement. All schools are working along that pathway. The next slide shows you what we have in store for the 2015-16 school year with our launch schools, pilot schools, and planned schools. And if you're wondering what the difference between those is, really, the launch schools are the five schools here today. They, along with the other three schools listed, all developed a plan, did research over the past year, wrote a proposal, and presented that proposal in December to a committee that included district staff and representatives from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. We see all of these schools as moving forward, and I know that you've heard that language constantly. And in addition to moving forward, each of these schools is getting some funding from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. So the difference really is that the launch schools piloted the work in depth over this past year. The pilot schools did a little bit of piloting, but they spent a lot of time really researching very carefully what model would work best for that school, so they maybe didn't have as much time to start the pilot, or they piloted, but on a very small scale. The planned school, Carver, did a lot of, took a lot of time doing some research on what they wanted to do, and then didn't really have time during this short year span to get the pilots in place. And so what we see moving forward is that the launch schools will expand their pilots, the pilot schools will begin their pilots or deepen them if they started them on a very small scale, and the planned school will take a little bit more time to complete the planned development and then begin the pilots in their school. All of the schools, again, will get money.
Kathy, I have a question, and I think you've covered some of it here. But I had constituents say there's nothing in the Triangle area, there's nothing in the middle of the, it's all South Lake and North Lake. In saying that they worked on a plan, you're saying that all of them were granted the opportunity, all the schools were. Some of them really went gung-ho and did it, and others did not get to it, is that?
First of all, the schools, the eight schools, applied. So our plan is really to select schools based on their willingness, their readiness, and their ability to launch, and that's the school's decision.
Okay.
So once the schools apply, then a district committee determines whether they're ready to launch. And I wouldn't phrase it so much as that they weren't gung-ho, I think they really were, but every school is very different in terms of the capacity of the teaching staff to make change, the feeling of the principal of the leadership team in terms of their capacity for change, the, how quickly they sort of settled on a model that was good for their school, because there was an awful lot of research that went into it. And so depending on how quickly those things happened, then they might have been ready to pilot, but some of them just wanted to take a little bit more time to research in full.
Okay. Dr. Moxley.
And I want to, I want to add on to that as well, because when we first looked at the instructional priorities of the personalized learning for students, we know, just like Kathy Halbig has shared, every school's at a different point, and every school has different initiatives going on. And we were very careful, and we wanted the schools to be very thoughtful about where they were with the different initiatives and what challenges they were facing, because you do not want to have something that appears like you're mandating from the top down, and that becomes another added thing on the plate. There are already too many things on the plate. So we took the stand that we communicated the opportunity that was there and allowed the schools to vet that at the local level, determine where they were in this journey, knowing that by 2022, we want to have personalized learning throughout the district, but where they were and where they could lever their strengths. So they're moving from a point of strength, and it's organically coming up from the grassroots effort. And that's why you're going to see some differences from the schools, because they were all at different points, they all had different levels of interest and expertise, and their students were all different. Then once they came to the table, the eight, they came on their own accord. And so we don't want to look at it that there were others that just didn't want to do it. They weren't ready to do it to the level that these eight were. And so when they came to the table and had created their plans and submitted their plans, we actually had a representative from the Gates Foundation here that actually the teams presented too, and they were part of that. That's why we had to wait so long, because it was their dollar that was coming to accelerate this work. So it wasn't just our decision on our own with that, but things were thoroughly vetted. And the one schools that were really, that had done, just like Kathy talked about, really thoroughly piloted things, they were ready to launch. But if you'll notice, the Gates Foundation through this grant, they've given every school money, because where they came to us and said, "We want every school to be successful, we're pushing everybody along," but a one-size-fits-all is not right for kids, so it shouldn't be right to mandate that to a school. We should allow them to lever as fast as they can, or where they need extra support, we should be able to have provisions for them to get extra support. But at the end of the day, everybody accelerates.
And that's what I wanted you to say for the public, thank you.
I have a question, though. If we have a 2022 that we want to have it in place, and if this is organic and it's bottom-up, that what's ensuring that at 2021, everybody suddenly doesn't jump on board? Because we do have an end date.
Right, and I think in this presentation, you're going to see a slide that shows progression, how many schools will be coming on board, so what-
They have bought-in, they're just developing.
Right, right. And so what it is, is that we have some trailblazers in the room here that have decided that we don't need a roadmap to be handed to us, we can create it. We don't need a blueprint that has the schematic drawn out for us, we're going to design that. And so a lot of the things that they have done, we will be able to utilize as levers for other schools that, when they come to the table, and see, these folks are all sharing their work with their counterparts, when they say, "Okay, well, X, Y, Z school, we're ready to do this, this, and this," they don't have to go back and recreate. They can take the foundational pieces that these folks in the room have already designed, and then they can customize it. So, you know, everybody's comfortable at different points. You know, some people don't want to leave home without a map, and other people, it's like, "Let me just get in the car and drive, and wherever I land, there will be a great day." And that's a good thing, and we need both types there. I mean, that's very true. So, and we're thankful we have all viewpoints coming to the table.
I just wanted the public to realize that they weren't chosen and that everyone is equal throughout the county, because that's what I'm not hearing, and I wanted it clear.
Well, and we just had the second grant application process, so we now have grants that have been submitted. And again, anybody was eligible to submit, some did and some chose, for a whole litany of reasons, and for right reasons for that school.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the next slide talks about the direct support from funding, from a funding perspective, to support the launch schools. So the launch schools get a PL facilitator, it's an instructional position, for two years to facilitate the work. They get funds for training, funds for teacher stipends and subs so that the teachers can attend that training, funds to travel to visit personalized learning schools and districts throughout the nation, which they said was really a key to their ability to move forward with the work. Funds for materials and supplies, and funds for a personalized area of focus, and we'll talk a little bit about, more about that on the next slide. I think it's important to mention here, too, that the Engage funds and the Next Gen funds kind of work together to support the schools. So with this particular cohort, there will be funds for student devices. They'll work on a formula that gives a certain amount per student, so it will be equitable across the five schools. And then we have that built into the Engage plan as we scale up the work. So in the first cohort, which launches this fall, the five schools you see here, Lost Lake Elementary is interested in fostering a growth mindset in the students, so that was a key part of their work and the presentation that they presented. Sawgrass Bay Elementary is interested in fostering student leadership through the Leader and Me, so that's a key part of their work. South Lake High School, the team there created a student ownership articulation plan that's really wonderfully done, and so that's part of their focus, to see how students can gradually take ownership of their learning. Umatilla High School has incredible community partnerships, so they want to leverage those to include the Umatilla Elementary and Middle Schools as part of their work, even though they're not really part of the grants at this point, just to kind of let them dip their toe in, to see what it's like. Wendy Hill Middle School is an important part of maximizing the effort for a vertical articulation, which, with two of their feeder schools, being part of this work. So that's sort of part of their important focus. Direct funding to support the pilot and planned schools, again, they will get from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation as part of the NGSI grant, funds for teacher subs and stipends, and funds to travel to visit other personalized learning schools and districts, so they'll be able to continue their learning, continue to see different ideas about how to make this work for them, and use those funds to help them implement in training. So in order to move forward, to prepare for launch, Carver Middle will continue to refine their implementation plan and increase the number of pilot classrooms. Eustis High School will increase the number of pilot classrooms, and Lake Mineola High School will increase the number of pilot classrooms in their preparation for launch in 2016. There are funds also that indirectly support the launch, the pilot, and the planned schools that come from both the NGSI grant and from the Engage LCS budgeted funds. Those funds include purchase of a system to track mastery, it's a software program. The program itself is yet to be determined, we really want to have school involvement in determining what's the best program to help schools do that. Funds for technical assistance from a partner to develop that competency-based progression framework, funds for technical assistance to help the district with aligning the personalized learning for students and personalized learning for teachers and leaders work, and funds for district fiscal assistance to help manage that 2.5 million. From Engage, funds for the coordinator of personalized learning, funds for three innovative learning specialists to help support the personalized learning work in the schools, and funds for technology tools to support the personalized learning work. So we have partners in our personalized learning work that include the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, as you've heard, also the Next Gen Systems Initiative districts. So there are six districts total in the country, we are one of those six, and they meet, and we have established a community of practice so that we can learn from one another. And so those are our collaborative design partners. Reinventing Schools Coalition, you may hear them referred to as RISC, R-I-S-C, they are a partner and a division of Marzano, so their work is aligned completely to the Marzano framework, and they help with classroom-level training, coaching, and support at the classroom level, mostly for personalized learning. Great Schools Partnership is an organization that will help us with that competency-based progression framework, they can provide expertise and guidance. The American Architects Foundation is a partner that will help us design classroom spaces to support personalized learning in the classrooms of the future. And Columbia Center for Public Research and Leadership will help us with aligning the work that we have for personalized learning for students and the work that we have for personalized learning for teachers and leaders. The next few slides just kind of give you an overview of the work that's going to happen. So if you're out in the schools and you're seeing a focus on something, or you're kind of wondering what the focus will be, this will give you a guide. We are, as Dr. Moxley mentioned, looking currently at the applicants for Cohort 2. So during the June-July timeframe, we'll be selecting the second cohort of schools to begin the work. We'll be establishing a community of practice among the schools that are participating. The PL training, or personalized learning training, will happen in July, provided by the Reinventing Schools Coalition, and we'll hire in grant-funded positions. In August-September, we'll begin that competency-based progression work, and then you can see for each month, there's an area of focus. And the area of focus is really important for a couple of reasons. One, it's a communication tool, so that we want to be able to communicate out what our schools are doing. This is exciting work, and there's a lot of interest in what Lake County schools are doing, the great work that's happening in these schools, so we want to be sure that we're communicating that out. The other thing is that it will provide a resource for the schools as they come on board. So as schools are just starting into the personalized learning work, and they want to know what a best practice looks like for standard operating procedures in a classroom, they'll have a reference point. So for August, our focus is shared vision and code of cooperation. For September, SOPs and unpacking standards. October-November, the RISC trainers will come back in and provide coaching at the classroom level. We'll also have schools from Lake County presenting at INE COLE, which is a huge conference that's held in Orlando this year. So they, our schools, along with those schools from the other Next Gen districts, will be presenting. And the RISC organization will provide an organizational site visit, which will kind of give us a snapshot at each of those five sites as to how the personalized learning work is coming along. And then you can see the October-November focus areas. October is data reviews and goal-setting, November is rubrics, choice boards, and capacity matrices. December-January, the Cohort 2 schools will present to be selected for potentially being a launch school, so this process is continuing. December and January focuses, you can see there. In January, I'm sorry, February-March, the RISC trainers will provide additional coaching, and we'll have the applications released for Cohort 3, again, continuing to scale. And then in April-May, we can back off of being in the schools because of testing, so we'll be taking time to evaluate and plan for the next year. And this is the graphic that Dr. Moxley talked about that shows the, our estimate of the scale-up for full implementation. So across the top, you can see how many out of our 40 schools will be moving towards launch. And so this is, again, an estimate. We have estimated that between four and six schools will launch each year. If six schools launch each year, we could move a little faster. If it's four, then towards the end, we could move a little slower. But again, the idea is that schools have the opportunity to choose the time that's the best for their particular school site in terms of moving forward. And to help the schools, what we have is, we're putting together for this fall, a digital pathway to personalized learning, so that a school might be interested in moving in this direction but not quite ready yet, then they'll have some steps that they can take, sort of on-ramp steps that they can take that have to do with having a technology-rich environment. Not that personalized learning is all about technology, but certainly the technology tools can facilitate the work in the classroom.
That's it? Yes?
I have a question. Thank you guys for being here. That is fantastic and exciting that you guys are all here. My question, I, kind of goes back into, you guys talked about the funding, the schools that are applying for the grants, and now we've got five schools that have the grant, the launch, and those, is it a set amount of funding that they all get, or is it in the grant application where they know how much funding they're going to get to do the planning? How does the, how does the funding work?
We, we're asked to develop the budget as a district budget.
Okay.
So, but then we split each category out so that each school does know the amount of funding they're getting.
Okay. Are you guys going to present them a check, like, for a certain amount, how much money are they, I mean, is it a big deal? I mean, I think it's a big deal, so are we making it a big deal?
It's a big deal. So the total amount that the district has been awarded in the grant is $2,534,056.
To be exact.
To be exact. And so of that, let's see if I've got my sheet here, about $232,000 will go directly into the school, for each of those launch schools, will go directly into their budget so they can see that. Remember, though, some of that is going to go to pay for their PL facilitator, right? So it's not spendable money for them, it's already kind of been spent in the PL facilitator. They're going to have money for travel in that, they're going to have money for training, they're going to have money for teacher stipends, for material supplies, for conference attendance. Then there's money that is available based on their personalized learning focus, or their, the personal focus that they're doing. So, for example, Sawgrass Bay will get additional funds to do the Leader and Me training, mindset training will be available, and so forth. And then there are benefits that go to all of the schools that are really shared, so that competency-based, I'm sorry, mastery-tracking software, that is something that all, all schools will have a part of. So it looks to me like approximately each school will have the benefit of about $480-some thousand, but some of that will be direct for them to spend, and some of that will be coming through the district to pay for district-wide programs.
There's, there's one check that is written, it's from the foundation to the district. And so then our finance department, they will set up a project, because we have to track these dollars very carefully, and they'll be tracked through Liz Hobart's department, Dr. Dejarle's department. And then each school will have a sub-budget under that for their amounts, but we have to track the whole- But we have to track the whole $2.5 million back to the foundation. There are deliverables attached to that. There are quarterly reports. Kathy does those all the time, and we have to report. And there's a line item, you know, cost strip with each one of those.
So each of the schools isn't getting $500,000?
It's not, it's not as cut and dried as, they're going to get a check for $500,000. They are getting about 400, whatever Kathy said, in funding. But it's, one's going to pay for the, some of the staff. Some's going to be for travel. It's going to be in all those categories.
Okay. And they know that when they apply? And they set their budgets up and...
Yes. I've spoken with all of the schools. We did have some things that changed sort of midway through the process. And so there were some things that we weren't aware of initially that did become clear partway through. But all the schools, I did talk with each school about the budget. So yes, they are aware.
Okay. And they cannot divide devices? Is that Bill and Melinda Gates? Is that their stipulation that you cannot divide devices?
The grant dollars that come from the foundation, their stipulation was no devices. So that's why we have looked at all our funding streams as we were looking at these initiatives. And that's why through the strategic finance plan and that instructional priority, we know that they can't do some of their work without some technology. They needed that support. So we've actually built that in on our funding side of the instructional priority.
Okay. How, I know that we have a consultant that comes in that evaluates, obviously, from the outside. How are we looking at our work here in the district? And I know you guys have a good plan for launching and piloting schools and having them apply. And there's a deadline for when they get on. We know that much. But how are we, throughout this process, making sure that it's working for our students and that the effectiveness is what we're going for?
We have metrics set up through the Engage portion of the work that are tied to the student key performance indicators. So we'll be evaluating schools and how the work that they're doing is evidenced by movement in those KPIs. In addition to that, we'll be part of a system of looking at the work in terms of how it's impacting student achievement with all of the six Next Gen districts. And then we'll also be looking at evaluating the fidelity of the implementation. So how well the schools are actually implementing according to those five goals. So obviously, our number-one goal is to improve student achievement. So we'll be looking at that first through KPIs, and then additionally, nationally, by taking a look at how Lake County students are doing and how all of the students are doing in the Next Gen work.
There are several moving parts in this initiative. Each school has their area of focus. And then we have those key components to personalized learning, which is the competency-based. It's the flexible learning environment. The learner profile and pathways. Those are components that the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, for their investment, they're actually, they usually, what they've done, now we know with the other investments that we've had from them, they've actually had an outside person come in and do review of that investment against their deliverables. But in our arena, because we have our own metrics as well, the KPIs, and then when we look at program implementation, we want to look at the program fidelity. That's a programmatic evaluation, and that's what we have built in with that, out of Dr. Jengris's office with that.
Okay. And then my last question is, you guys spoke about having a collective expertise now that some of these schools have gone through that. Are you guys working with them to talk to them about what worked and what didn't work, and how the district can better support those people as we move forward, especially with new schools coming in behind? And I just think that'd be really important in making sure that you guys are doing that.
Yes. We did that first on March 11th. We brought the schools in, and we sort of did the pluses and deltas to figure out what worked really well and what didn't work so well. And we've tried to make adjustments. And then the whole purpose really of that community of practice is to do just that, to sort of capture the things that are working well and amplify them, and figure out how to mitigate some of the barriers that are getting in folks' way.
And if I could add on to that, this is also being looked at on a national level as well, because Kathy Habig and I, last week on Wednesday and Thursday, we were actually involved in a meeting with five total districts. We were one of the five from around the country, where we were giving feedback, and we were doing kind of that same thing, that plus delta with personalized learning with the Gates Foundation. Because Henry County, Georgia, which is almost an identical size as Lake County, they were at the table. Lindsay in, from California, they're a small district, like 4,000. There was a district in Maine, that's like 2,500. And then there was Dallas, which is like 160,000. So they had this spectrum, and that's what we did very solidly for a day and a half. They, we actually had a community of practice. We were saying, what were the challenges we were facing? What were the things that were going well? Where did we see some pitfalls? Where did we see extra support was needed? And so it was some very good dialogue. Everybody was doing a little different emphasis on the components. So now we have actually formed a community of practice where we're getting, like Henry County has done some work there, a little bit further along on the competency base. So we're now networking with them, and they're sending us our materials, their materials, so we can look at that and see how that fits with us, so we're not having to reinvent the wheel over and over and over again. Because we have a tiger team that's looking at the competency-based. The learner paths or profiles seem to be the system wide across all of the districts. That was an area. But again, we were able to give feedback and do the exact same thing. Program implementation with fidelity seemed to be a unified front, that, you know, if we're doing it, we've got to do it with fidelity, and we've got to be able to measure the impact on student achievement. And so everybody around the table, around the country, was focused on having those metrics.
Now, well, these, I'm just going to share with you guys my two concerns. I hear you guys saying "we," and "we're sharing," and "we're networking." Are these people getting that information also?
Well, the information that Kathy and I represented in Seattle came from their work of their roundtables here. That's what...
The March 1st roundtable?
Some of it from that, and some from just informal feedback, yes, that we're getting from them.
Okay. Okay. Because I know you said you had a day and a half. I just...
My feedback, the only information I have is what has come from these folks piloting. I mean, that's, they're doing, they're doing the work here in Lake County.
I am excited about it, and I know it's in our strategic plan, and that this is one of our main goals in Lake County. And I think it can have a significant student achievement impact. I think what I'm having trouble balancing, and it just may take me to getting used to this, is if these people are planning and doing all this work, and then we wait, and I know how the Gates Foundation works, but we wait to find out if we get it or not. And now, I'm sure if they're all doing individualized things, that they have planned, and they have budgeted, and they've worked through all this stuff, and then we just found out a couple, two weeks ago, that this is, these are the people that got it. And so then, if the funding changes, and it comes from the district down for the PLCs, and what's going to be cost, and then we're paying for personnel and those types of things, then is what's really being planned, really being implemented? Do you guys see where my questions are coming from?
I do. The one thing that, why I think at the beginning I said what I said, was that this was an instructional priority of ours, regardless of the Gates Foundation. And that's why I always go back to that, that this is not a Gates Foundation-driven initiative for us. This was Lake County's vision. This was Lake County's dream, if you will. And this was our vision. We were just crawling. I mean, it was, it's that crawl, walk, run kind of scenario. Because of the limited funding that we have, because we were having to look for savings to be able to do the innovative work that was progressive, we were, we knew we were coming along to, we were going to be in a crawl, 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 crawl. The grant just helped us to, you know, accelerate the pace of it. But it didn't change our commitment to fund it, and that it be our plan, and be us driving that initiative. So we're very cognizant that the, that's why the Gates Foundation won't do the technology, because it changes every two or three years. So they wanted districts to be able to determine and decide and solve that challenge on how do you have the technology. You have to build a system that's sustainable without grant dollars. The PL facilitators, they did, that was one of their requirements, because they also knew that this is a new lift, and it's a heavier lift, and you needed that staff that was on a short-term basis to lift the work until you embed it as part of the regular routine work.
So Wendy's, my last question.
You said that last question.
I thought of one more.
I love it.
The grants that the schools are currently writing, do they, how much is their base-dollar amount that they're going to be getting?
So the Cohort Two schools are writing for a planning grant, just like this group did last year, and it's amount of $20,000 that will help them with their exploration, their travel, their training to do the work.
And then when they become a launch school, is that when their funding increases incrementally?
Yes. And we have that built into the Engage for launch, at the rate of four to six schools per year.
Okay.
Great questions.
Yeah, they were. Roseanne?
All right. Well, first of all, thank you all, the five schools who stepped up. You are leading the way for all of our other schools. And thank you for being here today, because I know you are on your short window of a summer break that you have. The one question that I have is, we have these five schools, and the five schools really have picked different initiatives for their schools. As we're encouraging other schools to come on board, will they have an opportunity to see what Wendy Hill is doing and what Lost Lake is doing? Because they may not need what Wendy Hill's doing, but they would really like to know more about what Lost Lake, or Sawgrass, or one of the others. So I think for some schools, because they have so much on their plate, not that all of our schools don't have so much on their plate, but some of them may be saying, you know what, I need to understand a little bit more. And now that you all have been, you know, the trailblazers in this, how the other schools will have an opportunity to say, yes, we want to do this, and we really want to do what this school is doing, or that's prompted me to say, okay, I understand it better, and this is what the needs might be for our particular school.
So yes, the schools that are launch schools right now have already opened up their doors to visitors from around our district, and even visitors from outside of our district, to see what they're doing, even though they know, and they'll tell you, that they're still in the beginning stages of that. But I think there's a lot to be learned for a school coming on to see another school that's in the beginning stages. You know what I mean? When they travel, sometimes they're seeing a school that's been doing it for two years, and there's a big gap between how you first get on board and what happens two or three years later. So they are opening up their doors for others to come and visit. The other thing is that part of that communication piece around the focus areas is designed to help schools that are starting the work see how they can move in that direction. So we're trying to put some structures in place to help schools onboard. That's one. Another one would be through the community of practice, where the schools can share with others here.
Okay. Thank you. Bill?
This is outside the realm of this conversation, but it's tied to it. With personalized learning and technology being an integral part of that, I'm very concerned about the lower quartile and their access to internet connectivity. And it seems like to me that we should be the leaders in bringing the communities together, municipalities, to speak about how we're going to get that connectivity, so that these, as we inspire these young people to learn, that they're able to do that. If not, I see the spread becoming greater and greater with those that have access to internet and those that don't, as we approach this personalized learning. So I think, I don't know how we do it, but Creed, you'd be like the guy. But I would like to know what, at each of these locations, what that community is doing and what the resources are to provide the connectivity, particularly that lower quartile. That would be my only comment.
Good.
So I would just let you know that each of the five schools is a bring-your-own-device school. So they are focusing on having student-owned devices in the school. And then with the student-owned devices and the district-owned devices, then there usually are plenty to supplement the work in the classroom. And technology's only one component of the personalized learning too. So like any 21st century classroom, where they've got collaboration happening, and some things happening on a device. And the nice thing about personalized learning is it really frees up more time for one-on-one time with a teacher. So to have all of those different things going on in a classroom, there isn't really a need for one-on-one. I understand what you're saying about the devices outside of school, however.
That's what I was thinking about.
And I was at the South Lake Chamber Executive Board, because I sit as an ex-officia member. And my, part of my report today was about personalized learning, and they are very interested and supportive of the work in what's going on. And I think that there's, that's one avenue among many. But the city entities are also represented there as well. And I think it's very important that we talk about the connectivity for a variety of reasons, not just personalized learning. I do think it is important to also make sure that people understand that personalized learning is not 100% technology-driven, that that may be a quarter of it, but there's these other components. But I think your point is, for personalized learning and many other things.
Exactly right.
Right. And Bill, to go along with that, I'm helping work with Taveri's Elementary right now, with the local Kiwanis, to do just that, to get those kids that actually need the outside help, so they can take one home and be able to do those things at home. So you're right, the community is going to have to step in, like you were working on over in the Leesberger in South Lake.
Mrs. Stevender, if I could, Holly Ryan's in the audience. She's from Yuma-Tilla High. And their personalized plan focuses on community partnerships.
You want to come up, come up so we can get you on the mic? You're important. We need to get you on the mic here.
Really not about public speaking, but it does touch on what you asked about, Mr. Mathias. One thing that we did do that, because we do have that problem in our area, we extended our library time for an extra hour. So any student who doesn't have access to the internet at home, or doesn't have a device at home, could stay for that extra hour after our school closed, use the devices in our media center, have internet access. And then if they also didn't have transportation, we were also able to coordinate with our middle school. And they could use the middle school busing to go home an hour later than the high school busing. So it was a wonderful thing. We included that in our proposal, and it just worked out phenomenal. So it worked out for our kids, and collaboration between the feeder schools, and something positive. So I wanted to bring that up and share that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. Okay, we have about four minutes before we need to take a break. Do you have anything else? I see Amy sitting out there with her whole group. Does anyone want to come up and say anything? Give us some vibes to make us feel good?
Here she comes.
Because y'all are doing an outstanding job, all of you. And I'll pick somebody from this side if you want to speak.
We certainly have learned so much from this work. And the teachers that are sitting here have led the way. It certainly is not a top-down initiative. It is, they are seeing changes in what students are able to do in their classrooms, and that is driving it at Wendy Hill. So a lot of the things you guys are worried about, we are built in, and we are able to meet with the other schools that are coming on. We've had many visitors from the other schools and show them. And every time we do that, we learn something else too, because of a question they ask us. So we're growing from it as well. But it has truly been phenomenal to see how, what students are able to do and willing to do, and taking responsibility to do, how it's changing our classrooms. So it's growing on its own because of the responses we've seen from the students.
Great.
We're so thrilled to have the opportunity.
Thank you. Anybody on this side want to jump up? I know she would. See, it's great to hear from these ladies that are directing you, but it's nice to hear from the people out there actually doing the job.
Absolutely correct.
And I just want to agree with Amy about, this is about the students. And we were very fortunate to be one of those to be picked to be a launch school. But it is so enjoyable to walk into classrooms, into kindergarten classrooms, first-grade classrooms, to see these students interacting. We had visitors from Knox County, Tennessee, come in, and they went into a first-grade classroom. They were in awe of the students choosing, you know, how they were going to show mastery. One little girl said it had to do with, they take ownership about their behavior. And one lady said to this young lady, she said, "Oh, I see that you marked yourself as a three today, but yesterday you thought you were a four." And this little six-year-old girl looked up at her and said, "Oh, I didn't think I knew I was a four." And it is just so wonderful and heartfelt to see students really grabbing hold of this. So I invite each and every one of you, when we get started back, to please come to Lost Lake. I know Sawgrass also. I know Sawgrass, also awesome things that are going at all of our schools. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Dr. Moxley?
No, thank you. I really appreciate everyone being here. Exciting things going on in our schools, and excitement yet still to come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here.
And look at that, it worked out perfectly. Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break.